And let's have these other people come over this way. So we can get in the middle of the... Let's get in the middle of the picture. I think we're fine here. I just want to make sure everybody gets in the picture. Good morning and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm Minneapolis City Council President. And before we have our meeting, we take the opportunity when we have some great community activity to recognize or people to recognize in our great city to honor them before our council meeting. And so this morning, we have the great pleasure of honoring someone who has been a wonderful force in our community to support young people and offer them guidance, support, and leadership opportunities through our park and recreation system. And actually, we have Farview Jim has been named after Gary and he'll be introduced. But I just want to just say one word because we... or a few words because we also have the North High Boys Football Team who were great, great victors this year in our state. And the coaches that support these young people really do such remarkable work. And it is very much a challenge for people to volunteer, take such a great time out of their life to support young people. And our children sometimes in the city are really... have issues that aren't found other places. And so the coaches, you know, do everything from pick kids up, you know, to track them down, to bring them in, and then support them. So I just, I really want to say in a particular thanks to coaches and their remarkable work that they do in our community because I don't think we recognize them enough. So I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Blong Ying and he's going to read a proclamation or resolution of the City of Minneapolis.
Thank you. And President Johnson, I want to say, I mean, you know, your comment regarding coaching is really important and I think Gary Wilson here is the epitome of that. And so I just wanted to read the resolution real quick and allow Gary to say a few words, if that's okay, Mr. Wilson. So with this resolution, I will just skip the whereas clauses. Gary Wilson has been a fixture in the Minneapolis Parks for nearly 70 years. Gary Wilson first played sports in northeast Minneapolis at age 10. Gary Wilson was a graduate of Edison High School. I know Kevin Reich likes that. A longtime booster and coach of baseball and football teams and a member of the Edison High School Hall of Fame. Gary Wilson has been the athletic director at Farview Park, which is in Ward 5, for 50 years. Gary Wilson has coached baseball, football, and basketball in the Minneapolis Park System at Jordan and Farview Parks. Gary Wilson has influenced generations of Northside and Minneapolis youth with his coaching. Gary Wilson has worked tirelessly to strengthen youth sports policies and guidelines with the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board. Gary Wilson could always be counted upon to solve issues fairly, honestly, and respectfully. He was never too busy to help a child fix a bike, return a library book, or get their homework done. Has made sure that children who want to play sports had the opportunity. Has driven thousands of miles picking up and dropping off youth for practices and games from homes and schools. He's been a fierce advocate of Minneapolis Parks and Schools to ensure the needs of Minneapolis residents are met. He has mentored hundreds of park staff, high school, and park coaches about the importance of mentoring and guiding youth in life through sports. He has always put others' needs in front of his own and he has made the City of Minneapolis a better place to live through his passion, love, dedication, and tireless hard work for more than half a century. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Minneapolis that the City Council on behalf of the people of Minneapolis hereby honors Gary Wilson for his lifetime commitment to youth parks and the spirit of play in the City of Minneapolis. Please.
I didn't... I really didn't expect this type of award or honoring, but I know North High has been always in my mind because we've been over there for 50 years and a lot of our guys have played at the park and then gone on to play. And I really, I want to congratulate all you guys for the work that you have done this year. And Mr. Adams, he's always been special to me ever since, well, he played for me once. Just a big thank you and I appreciate the honor.
Boys Football Team. So why don't you guys come up? Split kind of half and half so everybody gets in the picture. Your parents can see you on TV. All right, all right, all right. So again, what a great pleasure to introduce this group of fine young men who gave our city such delight watching their progress through a challenging season. They had a really tough schedule and went all the way to the semifinals and it was really fun to watch. So I'm going to turn this over to Councilmember Blong Ying.
Thank you. So the North High Football Team this year played 13 games and they almost made it to state and I was at 10 of those games and I even went to Sock Center for you guys to coach. So this is a resolution honoring the 2014-2015 Minneapolis North High Polers Football Team. And I will read the resolution. I will skip the whereases. So North High is actually known as Minneapolis North Community High School or North High and it's in the 5th Ward. In 2010, it was proposed that North High be closed by the Minneapolis Public Schools. Then, a dedicated group of parents, alumni, and community leaders saved North High. In 2011, in the wake of the tornado that devastated the community, the North High Polers Football Team went 0-8. The North High Polers Football Team has rebuilt itself along with the community. With the leadership of head coach Charles Adams, who's standing to my left here, a North High grad and a Minneapolis police officer serving as a North High High School Resource Officer has been instrumental to rebuilding that program. And let me just say, I mean, stop being there for just a second. He is a Minneapolis cop, so we're really proud of that, too. Coach Charles Adams was named the 2014 Coach of the Year. In 2014, the North High Polers Football Team had eight all-conference players, including the conference MVP and Offensive Player of the Year Tyler Johnson, who is here. Tyler Johnson is right here. And I can tell you, he played on both sides of the block, just not one side. The North High Polers were named the 2014 Minneapolis City Champs after going undefeated in city play. The North High Polers finished their regular season with an undefeated 8-0 record for the first time in school history. So they made history. The Polers were the Minnesota Section 4 Class A Champions and participated in the state Class A semifinal. The players, the coaches, and the fans of the North High Polers Football Team should be acknowledged for their accomplishments and commitment. The City of Minneapolis is proud to recognize the accomplishments of the North High Polers Football Team and its players and coaches and fans. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Minneapolis that the City Council on behalf of the people of Minneapolis hereby honor the 2014-2015 Minneapolis North High Polar Football Team and give recognition to their outstanding accomplishments. And Coach Adams, thank you so much for bringing your team here. You know, this is a magical season and, you know, I wanted to say this. You look at this team and the really interesting part about this team is that most of these players are underclassmen. You know, you have a sprinkle of seniors, but you have a lot of juniors and sophomores and so they're going to do some damage next year. Yeah. So Coach Adams, you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Blong, for having us here and thanks for all of us here. Just to start off, I just wanted to... It was really a blessing to see Mr. Wilson here. For, as he said, I was a class of 87, so a lot of what I do with these kids came from this man right here. So I want to give another round of applause for Mr. Wilson. And then, you know, my boys here at All the Time, I've had so many people come up to me and say, "Great job," this and that, and I say the same thing. I say, "It's not me, it's them." And the parents know and my coaches know that none of this would be possible without these great young men and a great coaching staff that I got along with me. So I want to make sure that they get the recognition. I always tell them, "Yeah, I'm the front man and that my name is out there, but none of this could be done without the great support of the Northside community." So it's just a wonderful thing to be a part of, so thank you.
Okay, sure. I'm going to feel like Michelle Tafoya here. If you can introduce yourself, just kind of go all the way across and I'll take the mic at the end.
My name is Philip Scott. I'm 10th grader and I play defensive tackle.
My name is Martiz Clark. I play linebacker in slot and I am a senior.
My name is Malik Matthews. I play wideout and I'm a junior.
My name is Kong Peng Lee and I'm a senior and I play special teams.
My name is Isaiah Matthews. I'm a center and I'm a junior.
My name is Isaac Johnson. I'm a sophomore and I play wide receiver.
My name is Corey Randall and I play nose guard and I'm a junior.
My name is Tyler Johnson. I'm a junior and I play quarterback and defensive back.
My name is Nate Wheeler. I'm a sophomore and I play D-tackle.
My name is Josh Cunningham. I play running back and I'm a senior.
My name is Jameer Jackson and I play D-tackle and left tackle offense and I'm a C-offender.
My name is Dallas. I'm a junior. I play defensive end and quarterback.
I am Nathan Hampton and I am a junior and I play cornerback.
My name is Deshaun Stinson. I play offensive line and defensive line and I'm a senior.
My name is Londo Anderson and I'm the defensive coordinator.
Hi, Bula Verdel and I'm the special teams coordinator.
Tyrone Johnson and I'm just a North High parent.
And my name's Leo Lewis. I'm the athletic director. I'm the newest on the block, so thank you very much.
So we will have resolutions for every single player on the team and you, Coach, and you, Mr. Lewis, as well. So, you know, we have it here. We might have to fix a few things, but thank you so much for being here. Okay? And my aide will take care of y'all. Okay? All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's give it up for North High!
Councilmember Johnson, why don't you come down? Thank you for coming down. Thanks for coming down. Thanks for coming down. Uh-huh. Thanks for... What a great morning. The next group that we would like to honor is a little bit of a different idea, a different part of our city, an exciting part of our city. And Councilmember Johnson and I, we represent actually exactly opposite corners of the city. And so he's got, along with a couple other council members, a unique shopping experience that he'd like to talk to us about. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to recognize Councilmember Gordon, Councilmember Kano, who share Minnehaha Avenue, which runs through my ward and their wards as well. And we are very fortunate to have some really incredible businesses along Minnehaha Avenue. And one of the trends we've seen is actually a lot of antique, vintage, retro, secondhand businesses popping up over the past few years. And we're very excited about it and have a resolution today to honor not only their work, their contributions to the community, but as well to honor the uniqueness of this place within even our, not only our city, but our state as well. So with that, I'll read the resolution and then we have our guest here today, Julie Kearns Ella Ritzman in Dallas, who are all business owners along Minnehaha Avenue. So this is a resolution of the mayor and city council declaring Minnehaha Avenue from East Lake Street to Minnehaha Falls is the Minnehaha Mile. Whereas Minnehaha Avenue from East Lake Street to Minnehaha Falls contains nine antique, vintage, retro, and secondhand shops, more than any other commercial corridor in the state of Minnesota. And these shops feature classic, upcycle, reused, reclaimed, lovingly restored, slightly used, and repurposed goods that make this an attractive area and destination for shoppers. And shops featuring these goods help contribute to the economic vitality of our neighborhood while also encouraging environmentally friendly practices of reuse. And the Longfellow Business Association, in conjunction with these shops, have worked to brand this commercial corridor, the Minnehaha Mile, and recognize its unique character and the specialized nature of the collection of shops located there. And the Minnehaha Mile helps foster a sense of place, community, character, charm, and collectivity. And these small businesses have hosted great events like Vintage Dog Day on September 20, 2014, where as they open their doors to senior rescue dogs and encourage visitors and shoppers to consider giving them a forever home. And as the premier destination for antique and vintage shopping, this stretch has become a magnet for future small businesses and visitors. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council hereby declare that portion of Minnehaha Avenue from East Lake Street to Minnehaha Falls as the Minnehaha Mile in recognition of the important role this area plays in making the city more livable, attractive, resilient, and healthy while adding charm and character to the community. The mayor and city council encourage residents and visitors alike to experience the shops located along the Minnehaha Mile and also encourage other entrepreneurs and business owners, particularly those specializing in antique, vintage, and reused shops, to consider locating along this special corridor in the City of Minneapolis. I want to see if my colleagues have some words and then our shop owners.
Well, I think this is fantastic and this is really a great stretch of the city that makes a really significant connection between the park and East Lake Street, also great destination areas. It's also going to be undergoing some significant reconstruction in the months and the next couple of years, so it's really important that we remember this and that we go there and we shop and we frequent it, even if it looks like it might be a little inconvenient because of the few signs or dump trucks here and there. So I hope that we remember that and really, we wish you guys to survive the construction period and to come out on top and with a great, much greater and better street.
Thank you. And I just want to commend your efforts because you're not only helping with the business development work of our city, but also our sustainability and green initiatives work and that's really important as well. So thank you for this and thank you for letting me be a part of it.
Just want to say thanks. Thank you guys for doing the work that you've done to make it possible. Most of the shops have been around just in the last two and a half years and the resurgence has been possible in large part because of a change in ordinance that permitted secondhand shops to open, you know, within proximity to each other. So thank you for that. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to say, one of the things that I really like about our avenue is that all of the shops, we're not just a store. It's really an experience when you come in. We encourage people to come in and look around. You don't have to buy anything. We're really community oriented. I feel like, I feel a little bit like Aunt Bee. You know? If anybody knows the reference to that. Yes. So, you know, come in and hang out. We totally encourage that. We're completely community-based, all of us, so.
Dallas is new. He's going to...
Opening a favor. Wonderful. Thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate it.
city. And so we have our president, President Obama, has issued an executive order and Councilmember Kano can explain the consequences of that executive order. But it's a chance for us as a city of Minneapolis to support people's activities moving forward because of that executive order and really celebrate the opportunity to bring people that have enhanced our community in so many ways more fully into the life of our great city. So I'm very excited about this opportunity and I appreciate people coming down this morning. We have a distinguished guest to bring up and anyone else that would like to join us to read our resolution and Councilmember Kano will talk about our city's activities going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. So I will go ahead and ask folks to come up and join me and I'll move over here this way to be more in the center. So Mexican consulate Fiero, please come up. Mesa Latina, Pillsbury United Communities, Central Area Neighborhood, folks who... You can also line up here to my left and then we'll... Especially if you're going to speak, too, you can come towards the middle. So this is, this is a very historic event that happened at the federal level and it's very important that our local municipal government be responsive and proactive in supporting the rolling out of this initiative because we will have significant changes and impacts in our community and we only have to benefit from this. So I will go ahead and read the resolution and then I will ask our community speakers to say a few words. This is a resolution in support of the implementation of President Obama's executive action on immigration. Whereas the United States is a nation of immigrants and home to 11.5 million undocumented residents who contribute to our economy and enrich our social fabric. And whereas over 10 years ago, the immigrant community emerged from the shadows and into the streets alongside organizers, faith leaders, and workers' rights groups to launch the Immigrant Workers Freedom Ride, mobilizing thousands of people across the country to bring attention to our broken immigration system. And whereas on April 9, 2006, more than 40,000 Minnesotans marched with the Alliance for Fair and Federal Immigration Reform of Minnesota, demanding fair and humane immigration reform in the largest immigrant rights march in our state's history. And whereas the City of Minneapolis values the role undocumented immigrants play in revitalizing our community through their entrepreneurial spirit, creativity, buying of homes, educating their children in our schools, and paying taxes. Whereas the City of Minneapolis has consistently supported comprehensive immigration reform by advocating for policy change at the state and federal level and by devoting staff resources to effectively implement the deferred action for childhood arrivals and to assist in the passage of the Minnesota Dream Act. Whereas in June 2014, the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office announced that they would no longer honor requests from the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement to detain immigrants for longer than 48 hours without a court order. And whereas on November 20, President Barack Obama announced executive actions to provide immediate protection from deportation and work authorization to long-term law-abiding residents who are the parents of U.S. citizens. Whereas this policy change will impact 4 million immigrant people throughout the country and an estimated 30,000 people in Minnesota and a significant portion of Minneapolis's 40,000 Latino families and 56,000 foreign-born residents. Whereas while these actions represent an important step forward, we acknowledge they provide no permanent relief for millions of hard-working people living in our country and exclude tens of thousands of residents in Minneapolis and Minnesota. Whereas we vow to continue to advocate for fair and federal immigration reform that provides the enduring dignity and respect that all people deserve. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council, by the City Council of the City of Minneapolis, that the City of Minneapolis fully supports the president's historic executive actions on immigration and commits to helping Minneapolis families and residents by directing our intergovernmental relations department to convene a work group focused on engaging the various departments of our city government, our community partners, philanthropic organizations, and other jurisdictions to achieve a successful and swift implementation of this policy change. Be it further resolved... Be it further resolved that support for the president's executive action be included in the city's federal policy agenda, along with support for comprehensive immigration reform that fixes our broken immigration system. And be it further resolved that the city clerk is directed to send this resolution to the president and the vice president of the United States, the Speaker of the United States House of Representatives, the president of the United States Senate, and the honorable members of the 113th Congress representing the city of Minneapolis. With that, I would like to acknowledge Mariano Espinoza, who is sitting next to our senior policy editor, Ayesha, who was also very helpful in putting this together. So, Mariano was one of the co-organizers, along with Suzanne Murphy. I don't know if Suzanne's still in this room, but the Immigrant Workers Freedom Ride was a national mobilization, and Minnesota and Minneapolis participated in that with many labor unions. And so, Mariano was a part of that initiative. Suzanne Murphy was a part of that initiative. They helped to organize people across the state to get on a bus and go to Washington, D.C., to put immigration reform back on the national agenda. So, we have deep roots and a strong legacy here of taking action for this reform, and we continue to uplift that legacy through this action today. So, I want to thank my council colleagues for supporting this resolution, and for supporting an initiative to fund efforts to help implement and roll out this process, and also acknowledge the many community groups that helped to organize around this Jewish Community Action who is here, Immigrant Law Center, many, many churches and faith leaders, and also, you know, Pillsbury United Communities, and a lot of the different groups that have been fighting for this for over 10 years. So, with that, I will pass this on to our community speakers. Luz, would you like to be the first?
Hi, everybody. My name is Luz. I was born in Mexico City. My mom brought me here when I was six months. I came along with my aunt, and since then, I've been living here my whole life. I graduated from high school, Washburn High School. And, why am I doing this? Why am I doing the community work? Because this affects my family, and affects the community, and affects the people that I know. And, that's why we were, have been working hard with Mesa Latina, going out there in the cities, like Wilmar Albert Lee, doing door-knocking day by day. And, you know, the weather was on November, it was on October, it was very cold, but that didn't stop us. We continued to do door-knocking phone calls. We did over 2,000 phone calls a day, calling people to... Because we wanted our voices to be heard, and it's just not the Latinos, it's other ethnicities that this would benefit as well. And we know that we have to continue fighting, because this is not over. This is just the beginning of what President Obama just said, and we have to continue because this affects on education, housing, and public safety. So, we're doing all this for our community because we need it. Something that people can't take away from us is that fear, because we know some other people are going to qualify, so, don't. What happens to those people? They still have that fear that they might be stopped by the police because not having a driver's license and being deported. So, we have to continue for those people that don't qualify, and that's why I'm here, because I'm proud of my mother. She did two years of stronger, stronger hi... Strike... Sorry, I'm nervous. Hunger strike for two years for the driver's license, seven days without eating, because she wanted a better education for me and my two brothers. And I'm really proud of her. She's not here right now, and I'm doing this because of everybody, and because of myself. So, I just want to say that this is not over. There's a lot of things to work on, and we have to continue. And then, something that we all say, "Si se puede."
Buenos dias. Francisco Segovia. I'm director of White House Community Center, one of the five community centers of Pillsbury United Communities. This is an important event for everyone, not just for Latinos, but for every, for the entire country, and especially here, the city of Minneapolis. About 24 years ago, I came to Minneapolis without papers and with my family. Being without papers is scary, and especially when you want to provide for your family. I want to tell you that thanks to the local organizations that were providing legal support, I was able to obtain a document, and then got into the process of residency and citizenship. Now, I'm speaking to you as a citizen of the United States. And, I have lived for 24 years in Longfellow. So, Mr. Johnson is my city council, and I oftentimes see him walking his little dog, and so proud of seeing him that, so. So, I want to tell you that as taxpayers, as a resident, we all contribute to this society. Without, even if you don't have documents, you contribute. And I want to recognize that it is important for the city that we are talking about 10% of its population. So, 10% of the population of Minneapolis is being impacted by this, Barack Obama's recent executive order. But, that 10% is going to change the way our communities look. So, it is, besides being a human right to have the right to work and reside and be a productive citizen, is also a major economic impact in the city. If we want to speak about the trickle-down economy, the trickle-down economy works when people, regular citizens, have the opportunity to work and produce. When I was able to get my first work permit, I tell you, my life changed, and my family's life changed. We are going to see that with this. And we are proud and honored to be with you, and ready to work to support our community members to obtain documents, but also to obtain jobs, and hopefully, some of those jobs will happen here at the city of Minneapolis. Thank you so much.
Vic, thank you. I was looking for my cues.
Thank you. I'm Vic Rosenthal. I'm the executive director of Jewish Community Action. I'm very proud to be here. It's been a privilege and an honor to work with the immigrant community now for more than 15 years, and I've recounted to Mariano remembering him getting on the bus back in 2002 and 2003. And, it would have been great to not have needed the president to have taken this executive action, but the fact is, is that the Congress has failed to move on this issue now for too many years, and it took some courage on the part of the president to take this action, to make sure that families that can stay together do stay together, to make sure that people are no longer, or at least many people, are no longer detained and deported, splitting up families, hurting communities. That's what we've seen now for far too many years. And the city of Minneapolis has been a leader on this issue for many years. Some of us worked together back in 2003 to pass the separation ordinance that made sure that the police no longer stop people just based on their immigration status. So, this is a city that has said, "We're not going to worry about what the federal government says. We're going to do what we think is right for the residents of our community, to preserve dignity, to make sure that people's families stay together." We know these people are critical to our economy. You know, my family came here more than 100 years ago, and we represent thousands of Jewish people, all of whom have families that came here at one part or another, many of whom live in the city of Minneapolis. So, we are, stand as we always have, in solidarity with the immigrant community, fighting until we make sure that the U.S. does the right thing and passes comprehensive reform. And in the meantime, we will do everything we can to support the city of Minneapolis in making sure the president's action helps as many people as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming this morning. So, we will present resolutions to all the groups that have been working on this, and right now, we have two copies, so I will hand them to Luz. And, just one more round of applause so we can finish, and thanks, everyone, for being here and for their support.
Just very briefly, the government of Mexico has welcomed this initiative, and we are here to thank the city council of Minneapolis for this important endorsement, and we are here also to say that we will be working with all the civil organizations, precisely, to help Mexicans that are just one of the groups that will be benefited in order to be able to go through the process. So, thank you so much, President.
Thank you for joining us. Thank you so much for joining us today. Thank you. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting on the Minneapolis City Council to order clerk to call the roll.
Glidden. Yang. Johnson. Quincy. Worsami. Goodman. Fry. Palmasano. Gordon. Canno. Reich. President Johnson. There are 13 members present.
We are all present this morning. Our next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda, and there's a motion by Councilmember Yang to amend the agenda to include under the Order of Resolutions a resolution honoring Gary Wilson, which we did before the council meetings. So, Councilmember Yang has made that motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Any other additions, any other amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. The agenda is amended. On the agenda then, as amended, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referrals of petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to proper committees and departments.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Our regular reports begin with the Community Development Regulatory Services report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 11 items for approval this morning. Notable items include item number one, which is making a change in the seating requirement for liquor establishments, dropping the number of seats by 25 to 225. Item number seven, which is authorizing the MOU with the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board with regards to the East Downtown Commons. And, item number nine, which is our B Tab program, authorizing the execution of contracts with almost 10 organizations to work on small and minority-owned business assistance programs in the city. With that, I'll move items 1 through 11 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Aye. Yang.
Aye on all items, abstain from number seven.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye on all items, no on number seven.
Canno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for item number seven, which has 11 ayes, one nay, and one abstention.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. With that, committee's chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward four items for approval. The first is passage of an ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter 203, which relates to grocery stores, amending provisions including those related to minimum sales floor area and off-street parking spaces. The second is approval of two new appointees to the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee. The third is approving 16 new appointees to the Minneapolis Community Environmental Advisory Commission, as well as waiving the resident requirement for one, and I'm thanking the outgoing members. And the fourth item is authorizing an increase in a contract with Project for Pride and Living by $93,000 to fund the final closeout projects for the three-year Housing and Urban Development Healthy Homes Thriving Communities Grant Project, and I'm requesting an early signature by the mayor on the fourth item, and I will move all four items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Canno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Report. With that, committee's chair, Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have one item today. This is regarding immigration executive actions, and it has three parts. It includes passage of the resolution supporting President Obama's executive actions on immigration, approving establishment of a city work group to identify opportunities for the city to support this work, and further engage with policymakers. And finally, to include an amendment to our federal agenda to include language supporting president's executive actions. And I'll move this item for approval.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Canno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have five items today. The first item is a staff direction to provide data on misdemeanor arrests, charging prosecution diversion by race, gender, age, and geography in offense, and to have the city attorney's office and the police department report back with recommendations in the second quarter of 2015. Second item is to authorize a three-year contract with Dakota County Technical College for emergency response pursuit training facility rental. The third item is authorizing a contract with Secural Nets for video surveillance network services in Minneapolis. The fourth item is to authorize a contract with the League of Minnesota Cities for access to their online law enforcement training for police officers. The fifth item is to authorize an annual plan agreement for 2015 with the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for our police departments to provide instructors that coordinate training courses. And with that, I will move all five items for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Emergency Management, and Civil Rights Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Canno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report. With that, committee's chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be forwarding eight items today. Item one and two are both contract completion date extensions for graffiti prevention programs. Item three is a snow and ice removal contract amendment. The following items refer to the Ways and Means Committee. Item four is the Fridley Filtration Plant Rehabilitation Project, and that's a project for final design and construction phase of services to the total of $4,622,000 for the Fridley Filtration Plant, no additional appropriation required. Item five is authoring an extension of contract with ABM for municipal parking system. Item six is the property insurance water treatment distribution services, and to extend the contract effective 31st, December 31st, 2014, to 2015 of that same date, for a total cost of $331,294. Item seven is the Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program. It's authorized in the submittal of a series of applications for funding for specific projects. And item eight are two low bids for activities of the department. I will forward all items for approval, Madam President.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Canno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted, and I will just note, our regular businesses must be quite boring for people because we've lost our, completely lost our audience, with the exception of our reporter. Anyway, Ways and Means Report is next, and that chair is, that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President.
They are five legal settlements. There's a acceptance of donated space from Metro Transit, a donation. There's appointments to the Minneapolis Television Network Board, a mayoral appointment, and then two city council appointments. The uncollected receivables, this authorizes staff to write off the outstanding receivables in accordance with our write-off policy. There's the medical review billing services, it's an extension with a contract with Alpha Review Corporation. The Meet Minneapolis Convention Center property insurance premium, authorizing review of options for 2015 coverage. The Capital Long Range Improvement Committee appointments. Number eight is the Target Center Concession Stands Project. This increases the amended contract with Northland Mechanical Contractors. And then the extension of a contract with Farstad US LLC for intelligence operations platform, and Minneapolis Emergency Communications Center 911 contract. There's the authorizing the extension of a contract with Delta WRX for business analysis and project management services contract. We're authorizing the extension of contract with Global Source IT for the PeopleSoft Human Capital Management Developer, and the, for the HRIS upgrade project. We also have the entering into a one or more confidentiality agreements with vendors, responding to our RFP for outsourced IT services. Then there are two positions, manager of assessment services, and chief appraiser, who are new appointed positions brought forward by the executive committee. Ask approval, move the motion for all 14 items.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report in its entirety. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report. With that, committee's chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll forward our one item, which is a street name petition to rename a street to call it Ninth Avenue South.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the resolutions, and we have the two honorary resolutions that were presented before the meeting, and then Councilmember Yang's motion would be number three. So on the first resolution, declaring Minnehaha Avenue from East Lake Street to Minnehaha Falls as the Minnehaha Mile. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the honorary resolution, the passage of a resolution honoring the 2014-2015 Minneapolis North High Polers Football Team. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have the resolution honoring Gary Wilson for his years of service as coach and athletic director in Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Under unfinished business, we have an ordinance introduction pursuant to notice, motion by Councilmember Bender and Gordon to introduce the subject matter of the following ordinance is amending the code relating to the zoning code for first reading and referral to the Zoning and Planning Committee amending regulations regarding homeless shelters. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have an ordinance introduction pursuant to notice by Councilmember Glidden and Councilmember Reich to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to Administration Arts Commission for first reading and referral to the Zoning and Planning Committee declaring dedicated funding to public art in Minneapolis, defining related terms, and expanding the purpose and duties of the Arts Commission. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Under new business, we have an ordinance introduction, unanimous consent is required, and it's motion by Councilmember Gordon to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to license and business regulations, tobacco dealers, for first reading and referral to the Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee amending provisions regulating sampling. Any discussion on that ordinance introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have announcements. Anyone have any announcements this morning? Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair.